reinforced by a statement by Oakland County this past weekend that the primary one roads that they have in southeast Oakland County still are Woodward and Square Lake Road between 75 and Telegraph. And they said that those roadways in the middle of the night would only get treatment down to a bare wheel track and there would be no other treatment to it until the regular shifts on an eight-hour shift during the day. So that's how they come to that point. And then, in that scenario, we would say that all response for I-75 would come from the Road Commission of Oakland County. The funding controlled, we determined that, you know, you're going to go from column number one to column number four. Our modified level of service, we were looking at having two road segments per truck, middle of the road, bare wheel tracks on a regular basis, and then, you know, as our regular shift, eight hours during the day, we would continue to work on all those road segments for the county road, the city roads, and the subdivision streets until we achieved bare pavement. The late treatment would be less than the Road Commission of Oakland County level of service, but certainly not as quickly as our historical level of service. And that delay on the hills, curves, and intersections would, you know, be somewhere in between. We're looking at somewhere between the 24 to 72-hour period. And we feel that we would still respond to I-75 for any of those emergencies over and above any natural snow events that the county would be handling on a daily basis. This was the map that indicates our roads, the county roads, and I-75. The next several slides basically put into words what I've just described on that chart. Any particular questions that you would have on the current level of service or the historical level of service? How about the funding controlled? Modified level of service?
You have a question, Councilman Curran?
I do.
Can I see your hand?
Well, I know that you're clicking through them, and I know that it was Councilwoman Bell Jomini's thought that a part of this would be to educate the community. We know that we received an email today about someone who saw salting and thought it was odd, knowing that we were cutting back on some things. So in the event that there have been high safety concerns, as there were Sunday night and even today, on the curves and the freezing, would you continue that under these levels of service?
Yes.
Might you speak to that now?
And, well, let me go back to that chart for the graph. What we're speaking of on the local roads, hills, curves, and intersections, we are not going to change how we treat them at all, because that's critical to those safety issues. What's going to happen, though, there's going to be delay in time from when our trucks get out there. That's the significant part of that. So, no, we're still going to treat those. What you're speaking of today, there was an email that we responded to, and, you know, they closed I-75 for time on Sunday night. They closed M-59 for a time on Sunday night. And there was a number of accidents on Big Beaver and a number of street signs that were hit for accidents that weren't even reported. In our local street system, the question is, why are we treating and salting? It's a waste of money when we only had to skip a salt or a skiff of snow. And truly, when you have those small amounts of snow, particularly early in the season, and cars go over them, it changes from snow to a very icy surface very quickly. We had numerous street name signs and stop signs hit this morning, and we also had a fire hydrant hit. And so it was imperative that we get out and treat those hills, curves, and intersections to protect our property and to protect, you know, the schoolchildren in the stand at corners and the people that are crossing, because it was just obvious that it wasn't a safe condition.
Actually, those icy conditions are more dangerous than a deep snow. And in the deep snow, people slow down, or they say, you know, but they don't anticipate what happens with the icy conditions. I think it's important for people to know that the things that occurred on Big Beaver and I-75 are, those are county roads. And the county road commission didn't send their trucks out, did they, until later? Did they send them out right away?
On Big Beaver, we called and responded to the calls from the police department under the contract. And what happened last evening was that when that snow came down, it came down very quickly, and those temperatures were up there just where that stuff. And I think that Officer Redmond stated it fairly well in the Oakland press, how quickly those conditions changed. And I don't have a timeframe how long it took the county to get out onto I-75. I don't know if the chief knows.
We, I asked for the information. We don't normally get that information, because we've never had a need in the past, we just always have the service. So what became obvious now is we're going to have to develop a protocol where we keep track of when we call, and then when we get the response. So we know that we called approximately 9:30, and then we know that we were able to reopen the freeway about 11:30. So we have that information. We just don't know how long it took for the county to show up. I got some later information that said the county was on the way when we called. They were stuck in traffic from, same traffic where we're closing things down, south of us around 12 mile on I-75. So that kind of delayed the response. So in the future, we'll be able to give an exact time, but ahead of time right now.
Okay.
Then, Isra.
Thank you.
Did I answer? Okay. And so we go back through, and we have, you know, the Road Commission. This particular slide, we thought was important to put in, because when you talk about plowing the subdivision streets in the city of Troy, we plow with the street division staff, the water division staff, we get assistance from the parks and recreation staff, we have assistance from other staff members to go out and inspect roads once they've been plowed, to make sure we didn't miss any, to look for areas that may be unsafe because they've turned to icy patches. We also hire contractors, who you approved here a few meetings ago, but we don't hire those contractors because they're cheaper. We hire them because that's the only avenue that we had available to us to get all of the streets in the city of Troy plowed in a 24-hour operation after it stopped snowing. By not having the contractors come in, if we were to continue as all the city forces, it's going to take us between 24 and 72 hours to complete that task. But we're going to be able to do it cheaper. Yes?
Excuse me. Are we looking at an hourly rate there? Are we looking at a contractor rate?
We're looking at an hourly rate.
Hourly rate.
And they give us just an hourly rate. They don't break it down into how much is profit, how much is insurance, how much is equipment, and how much is, you know, any overheads or repair costs, fuel surcharges or whatever they may include in there.
Oh, just so I understand correctly, compared to contractor rate, you'd have to add the city rate, the city labor, and the city equipment together to compare to that contractor rate.
No, the city rate is a combination of the city labor and the city equipment.
So the 34 plus the 40 cents?
Yes. We were able to divide that out.
They can't do that.
They're unwilling to do that on all of that information. We asked them a year ago to do that on a single axle truck, and basically, they, what they gave us is that they, all their cost for insurance, all those types of things, was about $100, and they're making $20 profit on top of that.
Got you. Okay.
That's the information they provide.
Sam, if I may?
Yes.
So the private sector rate is about twice as much as the city employee equipment rate?
Yes, across the board, it's pretty darn close, depending on the type of equipment.
And then, please, any other questions, Bill?
When we go to the, if we pass this resolution to go to the middle level service, will we be doing what most cities are usually doing? You know, Troy has always had a higher level of service with the snow and ice removal, and everybody comments about it when they go from community to community. Where will we stand in comparison to others?
I would say that we would be somewhere in the middle of the road.
Okay.
There'll be other communities that I think will, at this point, have a higher level of service, but there's certainly other communities that, and groups such as Oakland County. Oakland County does have responsibility for local roads out in the townships that there's to plow. Two years ago, and three years ago, we had two of the heaviest snow events back to back as far as snow for the whole entire year. Previously, it was 18, 19, or 19, 18, and 19, 19. Oakland County, and I know some folks who live in northern Oakland County, it took 21 days before some of those roads ever saw service. I mean, it was really tough ones. They actually, some of them hired their own contractors, plowed them out till they could get to a major road. Some of the subdivisions out there, they hire them every year, because they just know what's available. And, you know, it's not the county doesn't do good work, it's just that their funding has been strapped for years.
All right. Mr. Miller, you had something?
Madam Mayor and Councilman, I just would like to sort of talk a little bit about this in the sense that I personally called Brent Baer to make sure that we were representing their policies correctly and appropriately. And I think what is really important for you to understand and realize is, next fiscal year in our three-year budget, the county, RCOC, is taking over the snow and ice control. And Mr. Baer said, Mark, I don't have all the details, I'll refer you to the person. But what I can tell you is that you are going to have an extremely decreased level of service. You know, we only have one truck for where a lot of times you would have three trucks previously. I just thought that it's important for you to understand that that's what's coming down in the next fiscal year for snow and ice control on the Road Commission of Oakland County streets.
Well, but I think it's important, speaking of educating the community, that the community know that because they're county roads, and they don't have the money to expend for that, that it's up to the county if they need more money to do those roads, and the county has to ask people for money for county road commission, however you say it. And just because we've been doing it all these years, doesn't mean that we're going to continue to do it. But I think that's important to let the public know that. I have seen the articles in the paper, and the, I've seen Brent Baer on TV and everything explaining about what's going to happen there with it, and I think that that's important that people know, so that when they start asking why we're doing this, we're going to tell them that's why.
And I guess if there's no other questions on that count, I'd like to make one comment.
Just one on that, because you said, I do have a question. I know that these were multiple shifts, and my concern is, when we go to our own folk and we don't have that many employees, how those multiple shifts work? Could you explain that? Have you figured that out?
I don't know that I can tell you exactly, because as John and I have had conversations over the last month and a half, there's never, ever been two snowstorms that have been identical. And there's so much of variety in what happens on every event. But I can tell you this, that what we will look at on those is, depending on the snow that comes in, what we're looking at, if you can say it's an average snowstorm, and we're going to get more than four inches of snow, that we're going to have a small number of people through the evening and after hours for emergency services for the police to address particular spots and to work on setting up the plowing operations and so forth through those hours. But then, we would take the majority of those folks, and we can work them 12 to 16 hours in a shift. Typically, we only work 12 hours on a shift, and then the last shift, when we have cleanup and things where, you know, they're not in the middle of the night plowing, because, believe me, you become blurry vision when you're out there working this stuff all the time. It will help our staff if they're working, say, from 7 o'clock in the morning till 7 o'clock at night. The light that you have during the day and what you see is so much better than plowing at night. And so we would make those types of changes in our operation so that our employees would have better rest, more schedule, more on what they normally have, and we would tend to only plow our subdivision streets during a 12-hour shift, you know, similar to a 7 to 7. And then, if it's determined because of the amount of snow we get, that we want to go and bring the contractors in, because typically, they only have one shift of people anyway, we could bring them in to help us achieve our 24 to 72-hour projection and request for service that we're asking to approve tonight. Does that answer?
It does. The other thing that, though, I have a new concern, and that was, I remember before when we talked about the Oakland County Road Commission, or the RCOC, that they recognized I-75 as their road, and that came through on all of their documents. But I'm hearing you today, Tim, and I'm becoming very nervous about this now. I'm hearing you say that when called out by the police, then we too have adopted I-75. Is that what I'm hearing?
We're not adopting it.
Okay. I just want to try to understand it.
It's a judgment management call. I think it would be better if we're called by the police department for a severe safety concern on I-75. That's going to require essentially police officers standing at the ramps, closing roads, and making the roads closed. If we can get our trucks there to assist, even though it's not our road, we'd still like to do that. There's also incidents where, say, there's a car fire, and our fire alarm goes out, we actually create a hazard by having the excess water that goes on the pavement freezes up. So in those types of specific instances, where you're faced with either closing I-75 or maybe you could do something in an expedient fashion, I'd like to be able to do that, even though it's not our road.
That's fine. My fear was that then they're letting that one thing that they said they were going to do go as well, and I don't know if that was what you had heard, Mr. Miller.
No.
Okay.
Nope.
All right. That's the one that they were keeping?
And we'll still bug the county, this is your road, come on out. But, you know, if Chief Mayor or Mike says, hey, we need something right now, well...
Okay.
And the other item that I wanted to mention about this particular side is the slide is the city equipment cost. The costs that you see there are well below what the state lists in their equipment schedule because of our maintenance operations in our fleet division. And that covers some of this contractor cost, because I know that in conversations with them, that they go by what the state allows them to charge. And so that's a good portion of that, and we don't charge a profit on top. So those would be the two things that brings their cost up almost double to what, you know, we have identified for ourselves. Any other questions, discussion?
No. Anybody? Oh, Councilman Bell Jomini?
I just want to make sure that the summary in my head is accurate. We will still do whatever safety things absolutely have to be done, but they may not be done as early or as often as they're being done now. For instance, yeah, all right. So, a street in front of my house, I can anticipate that instead of it being bare pavement within 24 hours of the end of an event of four inches or more, now it will be bare tracks within 72 hours, or as time permits, we'll keep working on it. Is that pretty much an accurate summary?
That's fairly accurate, although on our subdivision streets, we never take it to bare pavement. When I'm on bare pavement, I'm talking about our major roads and our county roads. Because we allow our subdivision streets to become snow-covered, and they're still safe. And that's why we treat the hills, curves, and intersections, because those are the locations where people have to navigate. They're turning the vehicle, they have to stop the vehicle, you know, or just the sheer slope just doesn't allow them to sit on ice and be able to control. So I would say that what you may see is ruts out there longer, more difficult time, you know, getting through. Something is a little educational portion. There's a lot of people say, well, how come you don't change it to six inches of snow? Or why don't you do it at two inches of snow? Well, when Mike Culpepper was here, and I came to the city, it's been 18 years ago, you know, he passed on to me that go out and drive when you get three inches, when you get four inches, when you get five inches, when you get six inches, drive a vehicle out there and see how it feels. And most vehicles could navigate through four inches of snow or up to four inches of snow fairly successfully without being too dangerous. And I would ask that each of you, you know, go out and test it as time. But when you get to four and a half, five, five and a half, all of a sudden, you're losing traction. Your tires don't get down through that snow, down to, you know, either the pavement or the snow doesn't have that grit underneath of it that allows you to control that vehicle. And so, you know, it's not a sense of dollars at that time. It's a point of where we feel there's a safety issue, where we need to get out now and, you know, start plowing and getting that material off the road.
That makes sense, and thank you. So where people used to come from Sterling Heights or Bloomfield or somewhere else across Waddles, and they would instantly know they got bare pavement, they're in Troy, now they'll get to bare tracks within 24 hours or so on those major roads. And again, after everything else is plowed, we'll continue to work as we can straight time.
Either straight time or, like I say, a 12-hour shift. You know, something that makes sense for that particular storm and for forecast. You know, we've had five inches of snow at events in the past where the forecast was the temperature's going to rise up to 45 or 50 degrees the next day, and what was more critical to us, instead of plowing the whole roadway, was to plow the gutters so that the water that's melting would get off. But in essence, yes, that's what we would look at, and we continue to work at those. And if we didn't get any more snow for a couple of weeks, things would get down to where it would be bare pavement in those situations. But winter, every storm is different, every day is different, and this gives us a guideline by having a modified. And you say, people won't be able to tell the difference when they come from Sterling Heights through Troy any longer? No, you won't.
Anything else? Yes.
Question. I know, every year's different, but if you look back at that last year, last snow season, what did we spend on plowing? With that total?
Total dollars?
Just plowing, not salting?
Just plowing, cleaning the roads for snow events.
I don't know those figures, but while John's thinking about that, I can tell you that of the $249,000 that we received from the county on the county roads, we had $4,470 left that we didn't spend, because last winter was a very light winter. But the previous winter, I want to say we spent $349,000 more than what they gave us.
Yeah. Two years ago was really bad.
Yeah. What I'm trying to do is just for the people that are watching this and listening, what are we going to say if we looked at historically last year, what we spent in snow plowing, under the policy we had last year? You take that same year, and you say, if we have this policy here, which is the middle of the road policy, what would that calculate roughly in dollar figure? I mean, I'm trying to say, is it $100,000, is it $200,000, is it $500,000?
I will, I will give the same answer that I tried to give John. I can honestly, I cannot honestly answer that question.
But that's what people are going to want to know. You're changing the way we...
It's a presentation we do of the audit, but I have the numbers.
I'm just thinking like the average citizen, they're watching this or hearing this, and it's reported in the paper. We just changed, major decision here to change our snow plowing policy, and I think we have to. But what does that mean in dollars and cents, tax dollars? What are we really going to say? When you can't look forward, you can only look backward to say, this is what we spent last year? Under this policy, what would that number be? Would it be 50% of last year, 75%? Just looking at last year's number?
But the other thing is, too, that we had already decided as a council
Right.
that we were not going to be spending more on county roads. Once that money was gone, that they were paying us. We'd already made that decision. This decision is to do something consistently over the whole time, instead of doing it really super and then down to low.
And I think this is the right decision.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that it saves more money necessarily.
I think it will.
Yeah, but there's only so much they're paying us anyway.
And again, the caterpillars are very willing. This year, they're brown and black, so it's going to be a rough...
That's what they're predicting. Anyway, Ms. Lamraff, do you have numbers?
Yeah. This is for all roads.
Yes, that's what I was looking for.
For all roads in the city, 2009, we spent $1.4 million for winter maintenance. Last year, we spent $805,000, $600,000 more, $600,000 less last year than we, the two years before that were pretty comparable years. Last year was a very light year. That's why we have quite a bit of savings overall in the streets budget for last year.
Depending on how much snow we get.
And the price of salt or solvent, that made a difference two years ago?
Quite a bit, but we used less. One up quite a bit.
The point that maybe, there's so many variables that come into play here. If it snows during the day, it's cheaper than if it snows at night. You know, it's cheaper if it snows on Monday through Friday than it is if it snows on Saturday and Sunday. You know, to, yeah, there are so many variables to drive this to, you know, it's impossible, I think, to really say that it's going to save a lot of money when in fact it could actually cost us more this year, even by going to this program. So I think it's just our due diligence to try and cut costs as much as we can by implementing a new program, rather than trying to decide whether it's going to save us money or not. We don't know if it will, but I think we need to make a change. And next year is going to be even worse. So I think it's just a matter of, let's do it, because it's the thing that we need to do to save money.
Okay. And are you guys ready for a resolution? We don't need to read the resolution, do we? Just on the slide here?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Slidier, seconded by Councilwoman Bell Jomini, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Uh, if I can, Curran.
I would hope that, should this resolution pass, that there be some thought given to letting the community know about it in press releases, and we continue to urge caution and use multiple ways of informing the public about the change we anticipated.
Okay. Ready for a vote? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slidier?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bell Jomini?
Yes.
Lomine?
Yes.
Harlett?
Yes.
Not in Texas. Our next item is continuation of our Vision and Goals Play Session. We received a list compiling all the visions, all those goals, and the council goals on a sheet, and I don't know how the writers did work with that, but I read over all of them and then marked the ones that I personally felt strongly about.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilman Curran?
I think that we probably all worked on it. What I'm wondering, though, it's almost 11, and we still have a post-session. I don't know if it would be possible, do we have another meeting next week?
We do.
13th?
Would it be possible that we could postpone discussion? Okay. Then, I know that we can still take votes in this session. I would move that we postpone discussion of Vision...